Hey, everybody. I'm here with my good friend Lynn Raphael. He is running for Oakland City Council District One. I'm excited to have him on to talk about his run for office. The last time he was on this program, he was running for at large. Remember that, Lynn?
No, 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 please, please. You're sounding like these people who say, who say, oh, you're that perennial candidate. I said, wait a second. The last time I ran for any office here was in 2014 for city auditor.
That's right.
Yeah, I said, this is 10 years in the after that. How does that make me perennial for God's sakes, you know?
It's been a while.
Oh, okay. Look, slight correction. In 2015 or 16, I did run for Alameda County Democratic Central Committee. I did. That is true. Okay. All right. So eight years. Okay.
Too funny, man.
Yeah, hey, look, you know, you know what's what's sad funny is I was is that, well, I was looking for my recent endorsement just the other day by the East Bay Times, okay? They they came out and endorsed me, which is great. And and yeah, so thank you. So I was looking for my endorsement online. So I put in the words Lynn Raphael Oakland budget and and up popped, up popped an op ed piece that the East Bay Times had published a month in 2013. And I read it and it was something about it's high time that that this that the Oakland Council and Mayor adopt sustainable budgets, you know, some words to that effect. I read the thing. I said, holy shit, I could have written this today. It hasn't changed a bit, you know? And yeah, so here we are, you know, it's a lot of the same things that were really obviously messed up 10, 12 years ago or more have have come up. They've come home the roost, actually, and that's that's our fiscal problem in many ways.
Okay, Lynn, tell my viewers, when was the aha moment? This time that you decided, you know what? I'm going to run for Oakland City Council District One. What District One?
Yeah, no, the aha, the aha moment was was I asked around and I because I knew that Dan Cow had announced he was not going to run again. Okay, I knew that. And I asked around, I said, who's running? Is there any moderate running? Moderate, meaning a moderate in terms of Oakland. Hey, look, I was a Bernie bro, for God's sakes. And I I still agree with a lot of things Bernie says. I disagree with a lot, but but I haven't changed that much, you know? And and so I but but anywhere else in the United States, I'd be considered, I don't know, a left wing liberal or something, you know? But but anyway, so I asked around. I said, hey, you know, is there any moderate running? And the answer is no. And I said, who's running? Oh, the firefighter union president. I said, oh, no, I said, this got to be someone who's willing to run. And people said, hell, no. Why would anyone try to run against the the president of the most politically savvy city union in Oakland? It's it's suicide. And and they said, that's why no one's running against them. And and then eventually, a couple of people popped up and eventually three people popped up who were who were like, you know, I hate to say they were like Gumbayat types. I mean, they were running on they were running on a platform of let's all get the let's let's end partisan discord and let's all live together and be happy and and work together. And and then there was one woman who was running because she was she said something on her website or on her statement about she wanted to end homelessness, but she was so frustrated with the city of Oakland. She was she was thinking of moving and she decided to stay and fight for for the homeless. And she disappeared. She she never actually filed the rest of her paperwork. There was a young African American woman who actually did sound reasonable, okay? But she had zero experience. She had actually called me. I met her on the phone because she she had called saying, I want to talk to Lynn Raphael, the journalist. I said, I said, I do post a lot on social media. But she said, she said, oh, yeah, I was told to talk to Lynn Raphael. I was given his number because he he's a journalist and knows a lot about the city of Oakland finances and policing and other government issues. And and that's why and that I could learn from him. So I said, well, I asked her what she was doing. I said, well, at that point, I was already I had already filed to run. And I said, well, I am running too, but sure, I'll help you the best I can. And, you know, I gave her some pointers on how things worked and stuff like that. And and I think we met in person once at some rally. I think it was a recall the Price Rally. I don't know what side she was on. And we took a selfie and I didn't hear from her for months. And then, oh, I don't know, months ago, I checked out to see who was actually running. And she wasn't on the list. That first woman wasn't on the list. And 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 there was a there was a guy named Ed who's on the list, who I've who I've since met. Real nice guy, but he's also a complete newbie. He's a he's actually a kind of reasonable guy. He's a he's a stay at home dad. He's a baker, makes great bread. If I could put in a plug for anyone here, this guy Ed Frank makes wonderful bread. Seriously, as a as a he works out of his house. But but he also was upfront that he knew nothing about Oakland City Government. And he's basically going to learn from the rest of us. And that was cool. Anyway, anyway, the young black woman apparently had committed suicide. She had, yeah, she had she had committed suicide. And there was a GoFundMe site for, you know, for her two young kids. So that's where $1,000.
Very sad story.
Yeah, it's $1,000 of my my campaign money. My own self funded campaign would have gone. No, I've raised about 10,000 from it from people and and about put in about 10 or 11 of my own. Yeah, but yeah, it was a really sad start. She she seemed really nice. But anyway, so when there was so, yeah, so the reason I was running was there was there was no viable, I would say, no, she might have been moderate. I couldn't really tell. But the other people were all different shades of Oakland progressive. And and based on my my asking around, Zach Unger is actually, he's a true, he's a true blue progressive also, you know? Yeah, I was thinking that that he was that he backed candidate candidates for office through his firefighters' union and through his personal endorsements, that he backed people like like Sheng Tao and Carol Fife and Nikki Bass and and people like that. And Dan and, you know, Dan Cow. I thought he was backing strictly, you know, to look out for his brothers and sisters. Right, and you know, I thought, you know, and it was a smart strategy, very smart that that he he single handedly probably got the mayor elected with with money. He he corralled from the other unit SEI. His union put in money, the SEIU put in money, the builders, people, unions put in money. They got like 800,000 bucks in an independent expenditure committee and got her over the finish line by 670 odd votes against Lauren Taylor with a flurry of ads and mailers and all that stuff, right? So anyway, I thought that Zach was running strictly. Well, well, I always thought that Zach's, you know, political stuff was always just looking out for for his, you know, the best interest of of his union members that they would. Because when they had, when when he helped get people elected who were basically owed their jobs to the firefighters, the SEIU and the other unions, when it came time to to contracts approval, they basically always got what they asked for, right? And and so I thought he I thought that politically, he was he was probably you know, more of a moderate than a progressive. But no, apparently, what I found out and looking at his personal endorsement of Mayor Tao was no, he really is, he really is ideologically very similar to a to a mayor, to a Tao, Bass, Kaplan. You know, he is a Trubalu progressive and Trubu. And if and you know, by now, you must know Trubalu Oakland progressives there. One of their trademarks is, one of their trademarks is you can't you can't reduce crime until you fix the underlying causes. That's that's one of their mantras. And 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 that's and you know, how much Zach believes in that? He'll never admit that personally, but I can say up until about midway through the campaign, when I kept saying double the number of cops to 1,200, he was just saying, oh, we need more police on the streets and just sort of a vague more police on the streets, which basically meant the same as Mayor Tao, which was civilianize internal affairs and put those cops on the street and that peoples more cops on the street. And that was held up by the union because they said, no, you can't do that without negotiating with us, right? And so that was basically what Zach was was saying, but without so many words. And then sort of halfway through, he moved over to, oh, we need to work toward 800 cops. 800 cops ain't going to do it in this city. I mean, and even in a normal city, 1,200 of cops is the is the norm for cities this size, not without adjustment for crime. And and I've seen studies over the years. Department of Justice, I think, has a has a gizmo online. You put in the size of the city, it comes out with some number, 1,100 to 1,300, something like that. You know, that is just the way it is. But but anyway, so, yeah, so Zach is, you know, so so I was dismayed by that because to me, that meant not only are we are we putting a fox in the hen house when it comes to when it comes to contracting and budget priorities, you know? But we're also we're basically also voting in more of the same or more more of the progressive mentality that unfortunately has has gotten us to the point where police can't do their job because of pursuit policies that are unreasonably restrictive. Very, we have, yeah, as you probably know, right? You know, the police that police in in Oakland and for a while, San Francisco, still in Berkeley, they cannot, they cannot pursue a person who commits a crime, goes into a vehicle. I don't know if it includes a bicycle, I don't think so. But if they if they go into a vehicle and no matter how slowly they drive away, if they didn't use violence and there was no kidnapping involved, which I think is violence, no kidnapping, no violence, no, no, no gun possession. The police are forbidden, absolutely forbidden to pursue. No matter what time of day or night, no matter how busy it is, doesn't matter. They cannot pursue. And there are many, many examples that I've heard of by merchants who tell me, hey, people went in my store, they grabbed like, you know, McCullough's up in Montclair, right? You know, McCullough, you're right.
Quite well.
Yeah, McCullough's quite well, right. So so, hey, so, oh, it was a few months ago, my 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 dress for political success, a fashion consultant said, hey, look, when you're not wearing a suit and a tie and slacks, you should wear the 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 Tim Walz pre VP look. I said, what's that? He said, oh, he said, that's he said, that's a a nice sports, a nice sports jacket, an open collar shirt and Levi's 511 jeans.
I thought you were going to tell me your wife was your political.
No, 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 this guy is serious. No, this guy knows his and he's a genuine Oakland based business. Right, 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 right.
A haberdasher?
No, no, I'll give you his his it's Victor, it's Chad, Chadrick and Sons, something like Chadrick, something like, I should give him a plug. He does great. I mean, look at this suit. I mean, they're really.
Beautiful suit.
It's a beautiful suit, right? But, um, yeah, so.
Man, I ask you what what if you when?
Oh, no, well, no, let me tell you here about the shoplifting, right? So so I was going to go up, I was going to go up there that Friday, the the next Friday afternoon around 1 o'clock, and so I got busy, blah, blah, blah. So I went up Saturday at 1 o'clock. I went there, there were no Levi's, anything on the shelves. And so they said, I have to go. The 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 dominion of Filipino woman manager said, I have to go in the back and get it. So she came out, got me perfect, the exact size I wanted. She's ringing up, I said, oh, is that because of shoplifting you have it in the back? She said, yes, but up until yesterday, we didn't, we we just accepted the level of shoplifting we had. But yesterday, around 1 o'clock in the afternoon, when I would have been there, she said, three people came in, looked around, walked out. There's a shoe store associated with them down the block, came back in and grabbed all the expensive Levi's stuff, everything that was jackets, pants, you name it.
Wait, wait, you mean?
They they just they just grabbed it.
We stole them.
Yes, grabbing means stealing. Yes, they grabbed it. They they put their arms around it. They they carried out huge bundles of this stuff.
Because, you know, they could have been fabulously.
Buy them. Excuse me, say that again, please. But you're you're bidding, your sound is.
I said that they could have been fabulously rich.
And they were and they were planning to pay for it. Yeah, I guess that's possible, but but somehow they they bypassed the cash register and the checkout machine. And they just went to the door and she hears this, this tiny woman, this tiny woman ran after them. And this, yeah, I know, that's fine, I agree. Well, she ran after them and and played tug of war with with a pair of pants.
Oh, poor lady.
Kind of dragging, right? And and the woman, she was the woman who's that she was, you know, pull it. The the woman yelled at her, don't touch me, don't touch me.
Wait, wait, the woman who is stealing.
The woman, in other words, the 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 manager was yelled at by one of the crooks. And the crook was a woman.
Saying, don't touch me.
Yes, yes, that is what, yes, that is what you that that is.
You know what that's called? That's called a mitigated gall. I just have to say that. That's ridiculous.
No, no, but that's what you yell when in big box stores like, you know, Targets and stuff like that, because company policy forbids employees from touching, from doing that. You're forbidden. So they know if they yell it out loudly that the employee will say, oh, I better not do this, right?
Okay, so Lynn, you've been around.
Anyway, they left, they left. Just well, just to finish that up real quick, they 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 walked out the door into a late model Mercedes that was waiting for them and slowly drove away. End of story. She called the cops, she was on hold for an hour, and they said, we're not coming. We don't come out for shoplifting.
Okay, so.
We can't because they won't they won't be prosecuted anyway. The DA won't prosecute.
Lynn, you've been around a long time.
Right.
What is your plan to deal with all of this?
Yeah, well, the plan, the I have I have a, I would call it a complex platform, but it's also succinctly summarized as doubling the number of cops with strict accountability and better management. Okay, so you don't have five cop cars for one homeless person, right? And they don't hang around for two hours, right? It 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 also includes, as I say, changing policies that are unreasonably restrictive, such as the pursuit policy. For example, the city Public Safety Committee recently rejected a request to loosen the pursuit policy, okay? And I would not have done that. I would have said, improve the training of police. Don't give them carte blanche to chase everyone on crowded streets in the middle of the day, but give them some flex, some discretion, like most cities in the United States and California. San Francisco has done that, but they did that with a charter amendment. It was a it was a proposition measure E. Okay, that I would do that, okay? Then then I can get into the weeds and talk about petitioning the federal judge to get us a different federal overseer. This guy has made a very cush cottage industry for himself. 12 years where collecting a million plus from the city and and does the same thing in Yuma, Arizona, I believe. He's like, you know, it's like, which, under the federal rules for what are called consent decree decrees, we have a, we have, quote, a negotiated settlement, which is more of an out of court settlement. Under consent degrees, that would be forbidden. He couldn't have more than two, more than one at a time. And under consent degree, federal guidelines, any any overseer that whose overseer less ship lasted more than five, five years would have to have serious, serious justification for why. This guy's been in there, I think, for 12 years and we've been under total for like 20 or some nutty thing, right? And and, yeah, no, I just don't, I just don't see Oakland Police Department being that being worse than New York or Chicago or whatever. I mean, no, it ain't. It it's probably one of the better police departments in many ways. But but in any event, we should at least change, get a different overseer, some guy who, you know, if he couldn't get it together in that many years, find someone else, right? Anyway, um, you know, so that was, that's a big part of my thing. And the other thing is community, when you get enough police, you need.
I have to ask you, how do you propose to plan for the additional?
Well, no, well, but a key part of that was not just changing the rules for giving them more discretion. And it wasn't just making sure they're 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 strictly, you know, held accountable and better managed, you know? It's but but it's it's also, you know, it's also, well, it's also giving a more more technology. I I a lot of it, I think, is not changing police chiefs every two years like dirty socks. And when you change police chiefs every two years, rank and file tend to ignore them. And that's probably one of the reasons why it's some reason why the federal overseership hasn't closed was because you keep getting new police chiefs. And the rank and file probably start blowing off what the police chiefs tell them, right? And anyway, so and the last, but the last part, the the other major part of my my policing thing is not just more police held tightly accountable. And by the way, I was the treasurer of the Police Accountability Coalition for seven years, right? I worked hard to get that civilian review board in place. So I'm I'm deadly serious about accountability. It's not just some campaign slogan, right? But the other thing is community policing. I mean, when when you don't have enough police, they're they're sent around like the Keystone Cops. You know, they're, you know, they're, or I call it whack the mole policing, you know? They call it hotspot policing. I call it whack the mole. They don't get to know the the people. The people don't get to know the bad cops and the good cops. And it just doesn't work well. So if you have more cops, we might even need more than 1,200. Is you need to have them positioned there and not move them around. Okay, that's my.
The question of people are.
How am I going to pay for it? Well, it ties back, it ties back, is that what you're asking? Yeah, look, I mean, hey, look, there are for whether we get more cops or not, we're we're going to have to make cuts and get concessions from all from the from probably all the unions. Now, I would say, as far as police and fire go, they are, their their compensation is protected by binding arbitration. So whether we want concessions from them or not, it would go to binding, binding arbitration. And if and if we're trying to bring their compensation below that of neighboring cities, it probably would not be approved, okay? Maybe under grounds of financial distress, maybe, maybe not. My hunch is it wouldn't be, but the bigger issue.
Why do you think it would not be? Just curious.
Binding, usually binding arbitration looks at, they take a survey of compensation in surrounding cities and they take the average and they say, hey, you should pay them what the other ones pay. And they they and a lot of these other, some of these other cities have the same deal, you know? But now, is there some exception for a city that says we're in fiscal distress? Maybe, but but look, apart from that, there's just market supply and demand. It's good, it's going to be very hard to get attract police officers to Oakland. And it'll be doubly hard if you lower their compensation, right? I I mean, I me, I'd say, don't lower their wages and but look, but but make them contribute more to pension plans, which has been done in the past, but it was offset by salary increases. That's what Dellum did, I recall, right? I would not go offset, you know? That that that's probably what what I would do. But is and that's that's how and then as far then.
Kwan did it.
There's a budget that you have to cut.
I said Dellum did it, Kwan did it, Libby did it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, no, absolutely, yeah, yeah. The problem with the way they.
Did it?
No, yeah, the problem, the problem with the way they did it was was they 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 got they got concessions on pension contributions, but then like two years later, they gave them an increase in wages that made up for it and it was permanent, right? So it's like, you know, that doesn't work, you know? That that that's that's part of the chickens coming home the roost.
But also, how much of that, I have to ask, not to belabor this point, but because there's some other, I want you to talk. But I'm fascinated over the recognition that my recognition that working conditions drive these increases and that they're not just done, oh, just you can have some more money. But the very sound argument that Oakland really is a dangerous place to work, particularly as a cop, and therefore you have to have a payment that adjusts for that.
I don't believe it's that so much as police don't want to come to a city that has so many layers of review that before they even talk to someone or, you know, before they even stop someone, they have to consider how many hours of paper reporting they'll have to fill out if they if they stop and talk to the person and ask them. I I think that's that's a real that's a real discouragement for for police coming here. And they also know that this is a city that tried really hard to defund the police.
Yep.
And 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 that those people are still, if they if they look into the politics at all, they'll find out they're still in power and 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 that, you know, and like, do you really want to go get a job in a place that really would like to defund the police? But but the African American and Latino council members prevented it from happening. You know, that's the, you know, if I was a police officer, I I wouldn't give this the highest priority, right? So 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 you probably have to pay more just to get them to come here and accept those risks, right? Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, it's it, but it, but in general, it's very hard to find police in the United States. They're dropping, especially after, you know, after all the George, you know, Floyd stuff.
George Floyd, right.
Yeah, I mean, in a lot of ways, there was, it was a justified anger, of course, but there was also an overreaction to also against all police. And even, you know, oddly enough, it was even against firefighters too. In fact, I was talking to an Oakland firefighter who said, this is about nine months ago. He said, he is going to, he he was a captain. He said, his people have gone, gone to the to as EMTs, gone to shootings and and the crowd pushes him away, doesn't let him come close, you know? It's like, why? I mean, they're not carrying guns, but they're they're seen as, you know, you know, the enemy. They're wearing uniforms, et cetera, et cetera, you know? So, um, well, you know, it's not a city that I I don't think it's an interesting. At one point, actually, OPD was was a desired, a desirable, it was considered a state of the art police department.
Right, that's what I was going to say, right?
No, 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 I know, I know my my kid's babysitter was was a UC Berkeley graduate in in criminology and stuff, and he wanted to work for OPD because of that. You know, but, yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, so as far as paying for it, well, look, you first, you go through all the expenditures and you figure out which is the stuff we're spending on that is just ineffectual because the problems are so massive, societal problems. And I would say homelessness, there's no way in hell we can build permanent housing in sufficient quantities with our resources to house the number of homeless we currently have, let alone the future homeless that will come in, let alone pay for the repairs and maintenance and utilities, right? There was a study done two years ago that Carol Fife, council member, asked the city to do, and it came out with a guestimate of $2.5 billion. You know, that's like two and a half times our general fund budget.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, that was two years ago. And that was, you know, and that was without maintenance and, you know, maintenance and utilities and repairs, you know? So that that's just unattainable. So but that's in effect what they what they tried to do with measure, I believe, was measure U. It was it's a parcel tax that some of which a chunk went to to building permanent housing. That averages out to be 800, 900,000 a unit, and it doesn't go very far. And it doesn't go very, but and and but it doesn't go any far, but it sucks the the parcel tax oxygen out of the air, money that my mind should have gone to, well, heck. I mean, if they really want to do it for homeless people, they should have built what's called transitional housing. There was a, there was an interesting op ed piece in the San Francisco Chronicle about that. And that and that is essentially, that's sort of a, it's a, it's a, it's a couple of steps up from tents. You have a door and you, you know, probably the soundproofing isn't the greatest, but it's not there. But it's not permanent either. You're in the long run, you have to get them into real permanent housing. But at least it's it's safer than a tent and and better insulated and stuff like that. And costs a fraction of that, I think, I think there was a number like 100,000 a unit instead of, you know, 900, right? Uh, you know, but but the but still, the point is that I see it. Those are societal problems that have to be funded by the county, state and federal. You you, if you try to fix it on a local level, even if you had the money, more homeless would just naturally come here. They're not stupid. More homeless would just naturally come here. They're not stupid, you know? If you if you provide something that these other place cities don't and should, then they'll come to where it is, you know? Build a build a field and they'll come, you know, it's, you know, and I know I I've heard all these studies, oh, these homeless are all from here. I don't honestly, I I'm skeptical of that. I think they're kind of, I think they're kind of coached to say I'm from Oakland, you know? Because I I I have friends who work with homeless people and they say, oh, there's a bunch of white people from the valley. Who've been, you know, they're they're almost like gypsies. You have generations of white people who actually go, you know, are are homeless. But they're that they're sort of like, they're sort of like gypsies, right? And and people come up from Texas whites and African Americans because, hey, in Texas, they treat you like dirt, you know? And Oakland, Oakland, you know, you you're treated with some respect and you get some serve public service, you know? Yeah, but but anyway, so I would, um, I I would. I would not be spending parcel tax money on, I would not develop parcel taxes. That were meant to pay for fixing problems that are beyond our capability. It's it is like pissing on a forest fire when all you can build are, you know, I I don't know, a hundred units. And and you need twenty three hundred units. It's like you the month, that money would be better spent on. On providing basic services, including policing, including fixing the streets. Yes, what's that?
You're not saying against subsidized housing?
Oh, no, 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 but it shouldn't be subsidized by the city. No, 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 of course not. I'm, oh, absolutely. We should have, we need subsidized housing. These people will never have the money to to afford that. I don't care how vibrant our city's economy is, it it's they're not gonna be able to afford eight, nine hundred thousand dollar units. No, I get it, but I'm just saying, the city is not in a position. And I doubt if it'll ever be in a position to provide that. That should be state and federal. But money, it should not be from the, it should not be a city that has to come up with that. At the expense of providing the services that people in other cities across the United States get as a matter of course. You know, things like like. Publics like say they're able to walk around at night without worrying about getting mugged. They're able to drive down Lake Shore and during the day and stop at an intersection. At a at a light and not worried about someone breaking their side window, reaching in and grabbing their purse. That happens all the time, still does, right? You know, that kind of nutty, that kind of stuff. You know, they they should be able, the 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 public parks here are in terrible shape and not just because of homeless, no. They they're they need landscaping, the the median strips here are never watered. You go to other parts. You go to other other neighboring cities, they're actually take care of their their landscaping and stuff here that here.
Yeah, so you're proposing a giant piece of state legislation?
No, I'm not, I look, I'll advocate at the state and federal level for money for that. But no, I'm not gonna craft state and federal legislation. No, what I'm gonna say is do not try to, do not try to use Oakland's limited. Uh, tax base to fix problems that are beyond its fixing at the local level. It is, it is a poor use of money that could fix other other basic services that everyone needs. And that actually would probably in improve the tax base. Things like, things like public safety, so that the small businesses, you know, don't leave. And and that people shop here instead of going to Alameda or Orinda or stuff like that, you know? You know, things like, you know, the things like like repairing the streets. So you don't have to have you bring your car in to get aligned every every six months, you know? Things, you know, hey, look, I talk, I I I talk to people. Frequently, I, you know, I I would say probably at least once a week, I talked, I when I'm canvassing. I talked to someone who said, oh, they moved here from another city, usually in the Midwest, but not always. And then and and they'll and then and they'll say, they don't understand this place. It's like here, you have to do stuff that other cities do for you, that they provide is a, it's normal. You know, and here you have to pick up the trash in the streets because they're not gonna do it, you know? You have to water the median strips. They're not gonna do it, you know, and it's like, and and I think some of these cities actually fix the sidewalks. Here, here, it's the red, it's the property ownership responsibility. But and and then another person who had grown up here in Lower Rockbridge. And and she said she never realized it till she moved to Boston for five years. What what other cities were like. And she said, she said, she came back here and and all of a sudden she realized. What she realized like Oakland is weird in in Boston, she can walk around at night without worrying about getting mugged. In 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 Boston, the the streets are repaired. And in Oakland, and there's no trash on the streets. And here it's like, like, and she said, you know, she she never thought about it. Because when she grew up here, everyone took it for granted, that's what it's like living, even years ago, that's what it's like living in Oakland, you know?
What about economic development as far?
You know, I mean, you know, you and I have gone around the on this one. Me personally. My, you know, I'm I'm sort of, uh.
I'm not saying it's up to debate you, this is your.
No, no, I'm not trying to debate. Look, my, it's not that I'm laissez faire, but I it's more that. I I think build build a a functioning city and they will come. I mean, we have all these natural advantages near the University of California. We have great weather. We have a lot of really, really smart people. Educated and uneducated, really smart. And um, and and I I think if we make it attractive for for employers to come here, they will. And and they'll they'll hire people and they'll develop things, they'll pay taxes, business taxes and stuff. I don't think the city should be picking. I'm I'm not a big fan of cities doing economic poli- what is it called? Economic policy? You know, the it's, you know, the way the federal government is trying to incentivize green, green power and China. Invent, you know, subsidizes. Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me? Hello?
I believe Lynn is still there, but I think he went dark for a little bit. Uh, let me try something here. This connection on his and maybe.
No, I I can see, I I can see my picture.
Oh, I can see it now. You're back. You're you're back.
I don't I don't think it was on my end, but but anyway, yeah. There are things that there are things that at a national level might work and often they.
Can you repeat? You were saying you're not, you have a laissez faire and.
Oh, yeah, I said, I said, I I said, it's not that I'm laissez faire as far as economic development at the federal. And maybe at the federal level, I'm not. I can see the best, like the bill, the. I think it was the Build Back Better program, you know, part of the the huge amounts of money that the federal government is pouring incentives. They're they're basically. Giving money away for companies to build semiconductor and solar panel factories and stuff like that. And they're even doing protective tariff. That, you know, that might have, there may be some benefits to that. There may be, okay, but there's nothing like that that a city can do. Uh, and in fact, cities start giving away tax incentives, they start giving, they compete for that. They they give business tax holidays and so that that's that that is a race to the bottom for for cities to do. So so it's, look, they they can certainly may, as I said, make it a safer city, make it a cleaner city. And and they certainly can greatly improve the the approval process at the at the building department. Hey, it's been, that was one of my my platform items, even when I ran for uh for auditor. To to improve the the permitting process, it takes much longer here than it does in neighboring cities. And there's there's no reason for that. It's just, it, well, let's put it this way, I mean, part of it is Oakland government work culture. Is very uneven. There is a work culture there. They used to say about the culture at O P D. There was a work culture in the city government that's very uneven. I mean, some of the people are really dedicated, work really hard. And some of them, hey, look, we got a city here, we got a city hall that's mostly work from home, okay? You know what that means? That that means if you're great and self motivated and closely and or monitored, work's great. But if not, it makes a a poor work culture much worse, okay? And and I would, I I would end, I would bring us up to what many other cities do. They give you two days from work from home, but none of this unlimited, you know, up to your department manager stuff. Anyway, and and look, essentially, yeah, how would I, well, how to pay for, back to paying for all these things, you go through the.
I wasn't gonna say that, I was saying, uh, it's more, it's something that's sort of sticking out there that I can't help, I can't let go by.
Okay, go.
There are those who want a rush to for Oakland to get on with it, to develop. And it sounds like you're saying you'd rather leave it to the market, which. Hold on one second, uh, hold on a second. Okay.
No, you know, the the phrase I was looking for isn't economic policy, it's called industrial policy. That's what it's called at the federal level, where you try to use tax incentives and direct funding. To encourage certain industries, right? And I, what I have noticed in Oakland was the few times they attempted to do that. They they failed miserably. One of them was uh industrial marijuana, okay? That was a Rebecca Kaplan thing. She would come up with these these cockamamie. I mean, that was one she came up with, how we're gonna make, we're we're gonna become the the capital of the United States. And industrial marijuana growing. We'll convert all these, all these, all these warehouses and we'll create, make all these great paying jobs. And it's like, that was nutty because the cost of utilities here was so much higher than some of these other areas. Why would anyone have a, you know, choose to do their their grow house here? When they could find much cheaper areas in the in the state and stuff like that. Then the other cockamamie thing she came up with is she said, let's develop the bicycle repair industry. It's like, what? Bicycle repair? I mean, we we need jobs that can actually pay decent wages and and employ a lot of people. And because we have a lot of underemployed people, no, the bike industry isn't gonna do it. So um, yeah, I look, the e- even people who are really smart and understand. What, why some businesses fail and when others others thrive. E- e- even they don't try, they normally, they're very leery of trying to. Directly from encourage a particular business. And the latest thing I heard was was the the film industry, right? I sat through a, one of one of the council meetings on the budget. There there were people who were just adamant, they were convinced that the city should subsidize the movie industry. And that how that we could become another Hollywood. Well, Hollywood is not doing so well itself, right? And here these people are saying, oh, we could become another Hollywood. It's like, I, you know, it's somehow that I just. I'm skeptical of that because there, it the these are very complicated economic changes in the world. A I and and uh, you the the whole how media is distributed and so. And you and you start picking winners and losers and you have city officials who generally have zero business experience. Most of the people we have in city council, except for Noel Gao, is who has an MBA. But even he has works with nonprofits, I think schools. But then none of the, none of the other people, as far as I know, have any.
Are you saying that we should, I mean, you're talking to a guy who got his master's from Berkeley specializing in urban economics and. Economic development city of Oakland, so. You're saying that that shouldn't be in economic development at all?
Well, I know, I'm saying, I'm saying you have to be really leery of the ability of of any city. Especially Oakland to uh to pick winners and losers in economic development. To give subsidies to one kind of industry or business over another and expect that it's gonna work. I would say, uh, I would mu- I would say before you even try that. You first provide the 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 basic conditions in which all businesses will thrive, okay? I hey, look, I.
I mean, okay, okay, fine, let's move that out of the way. But what about just getting help to people who have businesses, you know?
Well, well, look, I I I actually, in in my canvassing. Initially, I early on, I focused on on retail storefront businesses. And I said, hey, look, here's my platform, I I I wanna double the number of cops. Um, I wanna, you know, liberalize the pursuit policy. I wanna get rid of the DA and replace.
Yeah, but all that aside, Lynn, Lynn.
No, no, no.
But I just have to say one thing, okay?
Yeah, what?
Right, that. That's great for crime, but as a business owner, we're both business owners, okay?
Right, yeah, right, right.
I I just, I'm just curious how you help the business owner, that's all.
They they're not asking, you know what, these these small businesses are only asking for for basic public services. They're not asking for handouts. They're saying you have to stop our getting our win. We're getting broken into repeatedly. We're getting, and and our insurance is getting canceled. You know, we're we're losing thousands and thousands of dollars in theft. And they said, let us do what we do well and 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 then and you don't have to subsidize us. You just have to provide basic security. And a lot of these people, by the way, a lot of the small, the retail entrepreneurs here. Are 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 immigrants. They're they're not, they're they're not white people and they're not. Some of them are African American natives from here, but a lot of them are from other countries and it's their first generation. And these people are really pissed off. They're saying, you know, you know, they they are not.
That's what I'm getting at, Lynn, and I just, here's why I'm confused, because, look, if during the pandemic. We had a number of people had businesses, particularly downtown, they're broken into.
Right.
And. Then all of a sudden, the city slaps this huge fine on them because. Rather than rather than turning around and saying, hey, look, we know this is a pandemic issue. Uh, we use tax secret financing through A B four six four Mullen, all this stuff, we'll help you fix it. And we'll give you the money to fix it. And so my point is, my only question is. I mean, you're certainly not gonna leave them out in the cold, right? Are you?
Look, look, I I've talked to multiple businesses who've had their, who've had their windows broken multiple times. And their insurance is canceled, and when they found replacement insurance, it was four times what their old insurance was.
Right.
They don't, they don't need money from the city to fix their windows each time. They need a city where people don't feel they can go break in with impunity and no one's gonna respond when the burglar alarm goes.
But Lynn, I guess what I'm getting a little touchy is, there are people out there who are suffering. From 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 a government's not doing anything already. And one can make that argument.
They're they're not, I'm telling you, they're not asking for.
That has no problem coughing up the money. You have all these other cities have no problem coughing up the money.
What, you mean for every time a window, for every time a window gets broken, it would reimburse them? Really? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's called, it's called. It's not a new idea.
Oh, oh, well, it's quote, in other words, when someone else breaks your window.
It's called city assisted code enforcement. We used to call it federally assisted code enforcement when the federal government did it, okay? So my point is you have people out there, I mean, but begs the question.
Oh, well, okay, it might pay for the glass, but it ain't gonna pay for the stolen merchandise. When 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 Georgian Waltz on on college has been broken into and held up multiple times. You're proposing ain't gonna help, you know, it'll.
I disagree. It's helped. It's hell, it's used in every other city in the United States.
But is it used to replace the stolen goods? That's what.
In some cases, it is used, it's called inventory and working capital. That's standard in business development.
You're saying they're they're gonna, look, wouldn't it be cheaper to just have enough police and enough surveillance? What you're saying is, no, I you're saying it's substance, reimburse them when they get ripped off. But don't spend the money on more police and and cameras. I don't, I'd.
No, I didn't say that. You said, wouldn't it be cheaper? I said, no. You wanna know why? Cause you're gonna lose the business. Either the business goes out, we have twenty percent of our business base that went down the last two years already, all right? And then you say you wanna balance the budget? How are you gonna balance the budget when all these businesses are leaving and you're not doing anything?
Because when you, when you you balance the budget by cutting these these noncore expenditures. And you get compensation concessions and there's some, there's some tricky stuff that might be possible. To refinance this massive debt. And there's some, there's some tricky stuff that might be possible to refinance this massive a debt.
But Lynn, I gotta ask you.
And you probably have to have the mother of all parcel taxes also. After you gain the trust, regain the trust of people, that's, yeah, it's like, it it ain't.
But Lynn, why don't you just use tax increment financing to do that? Okay, why do you have to tax people?
You don't need tax increment financing to provide basic, no, what what other city relies on tax increment financing? To provide basic services, are there some cities that do that?
Well, at one point, we did.
What's that?
We did, we did.
Yeah, re- re- well, they, what they did, yeah.
Give you the answer.
No, no, that that was, yeah, you're saying they took money from redevelopment and they and they said, they said, police needed. And it's related to redevelopment.
My God, but how do you balance the budget in the past? The police got part of their overtime from redevelopment money.
Yeah, I know, I know that, I know, no, no.
That's what it was, Lynn.
No, the what we have happening now is it's not because.
Now I'm talking about what we did, hold on, stick to it.
No, I know we did, I know.
Discipline conversation.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Stick to it, all right?
Okay, I know, I know they that they helped balance their budget in the past. By by diverting, legally diverting redevelopment money in sort of a gray area. Saying that it was actually for services that he that.
It wasn't legally diverting, that's a thing you made up in your head.
I don't know, I don't know, I I think Jerry, I think Jerry Brown might disagree with you on that.
No, Jerry.
But anyway, but anyway, yeah, even if I.
No, 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 stick to it, I worked for Jerry.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I worked for Jerry, and all I'm saying, not to belabor this point, but it's a sticking point to me, okay?
Yeah.
Because we have people out here, you tell them, call me every day about these city situations.
Right.
And you know how to fix this thing, okay? But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, are you gonna say to the business owners, oh, hey, you know, sorry for you, and they leave? And next thing you know, our our tax base is that much lower? I mean, of course, you don't wanna say that, we used to bill.
No, no, I'm I'm telling them, we're gonna provide you police protection and we're gonna let the police. They catch, catch the the bad guys and gals who rip you off and we're gonna replace the D A.
I'll pipe, I'll pipe down.
Hell, yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but but look, I think what you're also missing here is that what we're facing, the structural deficit here is very much different. Than what you were dealing with then, because this is, this is the accumulation of many years of of. And underfunded retirement benefits, it is massive, okay? You you're not gonna be able to do that strictly, even if your method worked to some extent. This is a lot more than paying for police overtime, this is like, you're talking a hundred fifty million a year. You you know what I'm saying? Maybe what you're saying is certainly worth exploring, among other things, you know, as part of the solution. I I I could well see that. And and the other, and then another thing that should be explored, that was pointed out by Tim Gardner, who's a volunteer resident and a really smart guy. He he was analyzing and he was suggesting that we refinance the 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 massive, I it's like. Oh, it's a massive uh amount of underfunded pension obligations that CalPERS charges us interest on. They charge us like six point nine percent.
But Tim's not the first person to come up with that idea.
No, oh, no, I'm not, I, it's the first time I heard about it, but I.
I've heard about it several times over twenty five years.
Well, you know, that might, there might, there might be some merit to that, I I I'm not saying there isn't. But but I still, my hunch is when all is said and done, they're gonna have to raise taxes. And that's, you can't raise, you you can't raise business taxes any higher without pushing businesses out even faster. So that basically leaves sales tax, uh, real estate transfer tax, which is forget, forget that, that's in the dumps. And so it basically leaves parcel taxes. And and as far as, and and if you try to raise parcel taxes, when the, when the the property owners, the voters who are property owners. Don't trust the city government to to keep their hands off of dedicated parcel taxes. They will unite and will not, they will not let, even though they're a minority of the voters, they will not let it, they will not approve it. There, some of them have to.
Don't raise taxes in a in a in a era of disinvestment, that's stupid.
Well, well, the I'm saying the the what.
That's what Oakland is facing, disinvestment, you're gonna waste taxes.
Oh, yeah, no, they're they're seeing people leave, yeah, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Disinvestment, yeah, oh, yeah, no, they they put, I'm sure they are, in fact, it, yeah, I'm sure they are. But but what I was saying about uh gaining the trust of the voters. To to support higher parcel taxes involves things like part of my platform is. Is is putting in a charter amendment that 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 if if we can override the state provision, it may not be possible. But make it impossible, make it very hard for the city to declare a fiscal emergency. And then grab money from these dedicated like libraries and parks. And that, and that's what they did this past June, I was sitting there, listening to them say, we're, uh, we're gonna vote. This is a uh unanticipated fiscal emergency, okay? And and I think it passed unanimously and that allowed them to legally steal from parks and library parcel taxes. That that burns the bridges with voters, saying, why should we approve more more parcel taxes? When you're gonna, you're gonna steal it from us and when you screw up and can't budget properly? The other critical thing to my my platform is to re, is to put a charter amendment. That 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 requires the city auditor to certify that budgets are sustainable, not just over a one or two year cycle. Which is how they, the most obvious they ever do here, but over a five and ten year cycle. Using projections prepared by the city budget department and the citizen and reviewed by the citizen budget advisory.
You know, I think time wise, we're gonna have to do a part two, because there's a uh. Uh, the whole other question I wanted to have is, what kind of s- people, city office are you gonna run, what kind of council? I was always asked that of people and I'll ask that right now.
Oh, yeah, hey, and you know what, I I've thought about that one, you know, because.
Yeah.
I hear so many people complain that Dan Cow uh is is unresponsive, okay? That his constituent services suck, okay? And and so, you know, and I said, well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I said, I understand that, I've experienced that sometimes, depends who he had. Uh, I found some great people in his office and some not great, right? But uh, but I know how to be a squeaky wheel to some extent, and most people don't. And I, and they shouldn't have to be squeaky wheels to do that. But I do know that Dan Cow's point of view is that the city um city council members should not interfere in city operations. And in fact, that's what the charter says, but this is a dysfunctional city. And you do need a city council member to interfere in 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 the operations uh of of the city, at least to go to Bathview. Okay, I get it, but look, the real problem is that it's a dysfunctional city. You shouldn't need to call up your council member to get a mattress that's dumped in front of where you live and it's been there for two weeks. That's nuts, that, and that's not, that's a problem with the work culture, with the response of it. That's something a city administrator should have, should be working on and not a city council member. But the city council member has to say, look, if you can't get the city people, the employees. Working ac- effectively and efficiently, we need a different city administrator or something. And you know, that's what, that's my point there, sure, I will have, I will do my darnest to have my office uh in the district. And somehow, if they have to meet in my garage, so be it, but but I will be highly accessible. But that is ultimately, the solution is is to fix the the operation of the city and make it more responsible.
Let's do a part two, uh, because A. This is about an hour, B, you can go on to another two hour. Uh, and C, uh, I think, I think, I think it's worth doing a two part just for scheduling reasons, you know?
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, to uh close part one. Needles, I didn't mean to shut you down, I just. Any uh, any closing thoughts as we close? Going once?
No, no, well, hey, look, the closing pause, the closing thought is, is why would, why would a voter? Choose a firefighter, let alone a firefighter union president? To 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 fix the fiscal problems of a city that are teetering, verging on bankruptcy. Because of the incredible effectiveness of that union president and other union presidents. In getting wages and benefits for for city employees that kept going up far exceeded inflation. As 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 city revenues kept dropping and dropping. Why would you put so someone like that in 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 an elected position where they have to decide on on budget priorities? Even if he refuses himself from uh from firefighter contracts? And by the way, he never has said that he would retire, by the way, I don't, I never heard him say that. So uh, so for all, you know, and there's nothing forbidding him from continuing as a firefighter. And probably nothing from forbidding him from continuing as a firefighter president. But but in any event, uh, it's just a, to me, it's it's, you don't hire someone who helped get you into this situation. By 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 effectively supporting and getting, uh, you know, funded political, uh, you know. Uh, officials, people elected to office with union money. And and then they had to, then they were in in beholden to the unions to give them this month, to give them what they asked for. Even at the risk of of the fiscal uh health of the city, it it doesn't make sense, you know?
All right, well, folks, there'll be a part two, and uh Lynn?
Yeah.
Tell people where you got your suit from.
Hmm, I got, I gotta look it up.
Oh, okay.
No, you know. Wait, wait, put put it on pause a minute, let me, let me, let me look it up here. Uh, you know, it's, you know, it wonderful stuff, you know, it's, let's uh.
It reminds me of uh, it reminds me of the suit, what was it, I think, movie, uh? Al Pacino had one of those suits in one of his movies, trying to remember which which movie.
Okay, here we go, it's.
That's a cheat, yeah.
It's Chokare and Son, C H O O K H A R E and son.
Nice.
Okay, and they're they're located in the old I'm on the, on one of the upper floors of the old I mag.
Oh, in the corner of nineteenth and Broadway. Awesome, nice, hey, don't move a muscle, everybody, we'll be back, subscribe to Zeni sixty two. On YouTube and bookmark Oaklandnewsonline.com, zennireport.com and. Zeni sixty two blog dot com, all right, and don't forget NFL news by Zeni sixty two dot com. And San Diego Comic Con news dot com, among others, and Oscar movie news dot com. All right, that's a lot. And hey, if you need uh other information, just go to Zeni sixty two media dot com too, that ends this stream, thank you, thanks Lynn.